City Council Meeting to Order. Before we move on to tonight's agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. On March 6th, I issued an emergency proclamation declaring a civil emergency in the city due to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 24th, the Governor issued Proclamation 20-28 prohibiting meetings that fall under the Open Public Meetings Act, such as our City Council meeting, from being conducted in person. This prohibition has been extended through November 9th. Tonight's meeting will be held entirely remotely. The meeting will be recorded, streamed live, and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting or make comments. And for those members of the public on the call, welcome. Thank you for joining us this evening. For those of you who submitted the online form to make comments, your name will be called under the Audience Comment portion of the meeting. If there's anyone on the call this evening who did not sign up but would like to make comments tonight, please press *3 on your phone and we will add you to the speakers' list. So at this point in time, I'll take a moment to take a roll call of the council members in attendance. Please stay here when I call your name. Councilmember D. Michelle.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Thanks. Council President Hunt?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz?
Here.
Thank you. Deputy City Council President Ray?
Here.
Thank you. And Councilmember Walsh?
Here.
That's all seven councilmembers this evening. We also will have various staff presenting and participating in tonight's meeting, including City Administrator Wally Bobkowick, Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder, Finance Director Beth Goldberg, Management Analyst Jeremy Brescher-Hamson, City Attorney Jim Haney, and Deputy City Clerk Pisha Ghezer. There may also be other city staff in attendance. So I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. Please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. For members of the public, if you're also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. And the next item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone in attendance could keep your microphone muted, I do welcome you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on our agenda this evening is Audience Comments. And City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes.
Great. I'm gonna go through a few guidelines first and then we'll get to the list. For those making comments, please direct your comments to the whole council and not to individuals. And while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, please unmute your microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and please limit your comments to five minutes. When you are done, please remute your microphone. If you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if you're able. Again, for those who have joined us tonight and would like to speak, under Audience Comments, but did not sign up in advance, please press *3 on your phone so our clerk can see your desire to speak, and we will call the last two digits of your phone number when it is your turn to make comments. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. If a speaker is out of order, I will ask them to stop and mute their microphone. If a speaker does not comply, I may direct staff to mute their microphone. If a disruption to the meeting occurs and order cannot be restored, I may direct staff to remove you from the call. Citizen comments, both written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes these comments seriously. We want to thank all of you for taking the time to address this this evening. City Clerk, can you please identify the first person who signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, and before I, or when I call your names, those on the phone to make comments, I'll send you a request to unmute. You will then need to press *6 on your phone, and if you also muted your own phone, you will need to unmute that as well. So our first caller, or our first person to speak tonight is James Whitfield. James, I'm sending you a request to unmute now.
Okay, thank you very much. Mayor and councilmembers, it is great to address you this evening. My name is James Whitfield. I am a member of the broader Eastside community and also a member of the Right to Breathe Committee. We work policy action for, to ensure black people's right to breathe and safety and respect for black people here on the Eastside. I am calling in to provide some comments specifically about the Police Accountability, Equity, and Human Services Action Plan update. First of all, I just want to say how much I and we as members of the Right to Breathe Committee appreciate the fact that the city is taking these steps in order to address police accountability, equity, and human services, and are very pleased to continue to support the city as that work gets done. Specifically, though, I want to talk, speak to the issue of school resource officers. As a young man growing up, I actually had armed officers in my school, but I can assure you that this is not a thing that is very pleasant, I would assume for anyone, but certainly not for young black children. It is not just a distraction, it's actually a harm. I came to my policy work through health policy and issues related to health disparities, and one of the primary reasons that black children and black people actually have worse health outcomes is because of the ongoing stress that is caused simply by being black and suffering issues of racism here in the United States. One of the ways that happens is when we are around issues that, and situations that threaten our public, threaten our safety. And unfortunately, today, one of the things that threatens a black person's safety is an armed police officer. It is not the intent of the officer, that's the issue, it's simply having an armed officer around. Knowing that there may be some sort of active shooter situation that would require an armed officer at the camp, at the school, is certainly a risk and something that is horrifying and nothing that anybody would ever want to deal with. However, that risk is exceedingly small. However, the black child is actually traumatized every time that officer walks by with a gun. So unfortunately, the research is very clear that black children are perceived as older, black bodies are perceived more likely as a threat due to unconscious and implicit bias, and so black children constantly have to be on their arm, frankly, on their guard whenever they are around officers that have guns. So unfortunately, while the risk of, again, an armed shooter situation is real, it's very small, and unfortunately, the consequence of that is that in a very real way, years are taking off, being taken off of the lives of black people when they grow up in situations where there are armed officers in their schools. So we strongly recommend that you all look very closely at that situation, hopefully remove armed SROs from the schools. Thank you very much for your time and attention, and again, I appreciate all the work you all are doing on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, James. City Clerk, who signed up next to speak?
Next, we have Loy Lumala, who I don't see on the call. Loy, if you are on the meeting tonight, please press *3 on your phone to let us know you're here. The next caller after Loy is Eric Nissen. I also don't see Eric on the phone. Eric, if you are one of our phone-in callers, please press *3 to let us know you're here. And then next, we have Julia Doohan. I know Julia is on the line. Julia, I'm going to send you a request to unmute now. Please press *6 and then also unmute your phone.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good, great. Yeah, sending, I'm on a LAN line, so it's sending me a signal it wasn't gonna work. Hi, I'm Julia Dean. It's spelled D-U-I-N, but it's pronounced Dean. I live kind of in the Gilman Village area. I, and I've lived in this city for five years, and I wanted to speak also to this, the Equity and Human Services Action Plan, having to do with mental health professionals substituting for police. I am the mother of a child who's currently institutionalized in a state mental institution south of Tacoma. I've had to call the police to my house, so I do know about this issue quite well. And just a couple of questions I just wanted to bring up, just so you could be thinking about them, in that, number one, everyone talks about hiring mental health professionals instead of having police officers. Just so you know, the market is really sparse out there. Everybody is clamoring for mental health professionals everywhere. They are in huge need, and hopefully you would have to, you'd have to pay them pretty well, because there aren't enough to go around even now. So just saying, they're not on trees. Number two, would you have these professionals available 24/7? Sometimes people have mental health episodes at very weird hours of the day, so just something to think about. And number three, if this person's out of control, what are you going to do? Are you gonna have this person call police backup? I mean, I've been in that situation where, yeah, there was someone out of control, and yeah, I needed a strong, someone with a gun. So just, and four, in that, people tend, parents or relatives tend to, they call 9/11 for a reason. We already have mental health professionals that we take our offspring or relatives to go see, so we have plenty of them in our lives, but if there is an episode that's really out of control, we pretty much, usually we call 911 because we need force. We need someone who is several levels above a mental health person. So just to say, I know it's the real end thing to say, oh, replace police with mental health professionals, I'm just here to say, having lived through this, it's a little harder than it sounds, and it's not, it's not a simple thing, and it's not necessarily gonna solve the problem. If you have any more questions, I'm happy, you know, someone can, I'm happy to talk to people privately if you want to get ahold of me after the meeting. Thanks for listening.
Julia, thank you so much for sharing that. Going back to the City Clerk to see if either Loy or Eric are on the line?
No, Mayor, I don't see that either of them have joined, and I don't see that our remaining phone-in callers are interested in making comments at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank both of our speakers tonight. Both were providing comments on the Police Accountability, Equity, and Human Services Action Plan, which the council will be talking about this evening, the concerns about SROs in schools potentially causing harm to certain students, and also about the complexity of mental health crossing over into policing services, and that this is not an easy thing to do. So thank you both for coming in and sharing that with us this evening. I am going to move to the next item, which is Committee and Regional Reports, and we will start with Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Zach Hall. Two quick reports this evening. First, the Cascade Water Alliance Board of Directors met last Wednesday, October 28th. The highlight of that meeting is that the board unanimously voted in favor to execute an agreement for the sale of temporary surplus water at discount to the city of Issaquah. So yay, and I also just want to send a big thank you to Director Bob York and his entire team for this creative solution, and it gives us a lot of time to focus on improvements and is truly a benefit to our community. So thank you very much, Bob. The neck, oh, and also, just to say too, that Mayor Polly expressed her gratitude for Bob and his entire team at the Cascade Board Meeting as well. So the next report, the next meeting of the King County Affordable Housing Committee of the Growth Management Planning Council is next Friday, November 13th. Spooky. I haven't received an agenda for that meeting yet, but I can tell you that we'll be discussing the committee's list of shared principles regarding revenue, untapped revenue sources, and potentially new revenue sources for affordable housing, like I've mentioned to you all before. I do apologize, I don't yet have a draft to share with you. Things seem to be moving slowly at the moment, but I've asked staff to get me a copy to share with council and administration by the end of the day tomorrow, so stay tuned for that. That concludes my report, Mayor Polly.
Mayor, you're muted. It's not even funny anymore. Okay, I'll just write a check. Thank you, Councilmember Hall, hope you can hear me. Next up is Councilmember D. Michelle.
Thank you. This is Councilmember D. Michelle. I attended the Eastside Transportation Partnership Meeting on October the 10th, and following a presentation from Sound Transit to the Combined Transportation Boards, Eastside Transportation Partnership members broke into a subgroup, and our discussion centered on legislative priorities for transportation. We were all tasked with writing up a short summary about why transit is important to each of our communities, and Kirkland Deputy Mayor Jay Arnold will be coordinating the legislative discussion that will take place this month. In addition, I will be attending the Eastside Human Services Forum Legislative Committee on Wednesday, November 4th, and the Healthier Here Governing Board meets on Thursday, November 5th. And that is my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember D. Michelle. Next up is Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I have a quick report in that I will be attending the Puget Sound Regional Council Economic Development District Board, it's mouthful, on Wednesday the 4th. We have a working session between 12:00 and 1:00, just discussing some of the upcoming things that we're putting in place for some 2050 plans for economic development. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Goodman, next?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Goodman here. Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors will meet on Thursday, November 12th at 4:00 PM at Headquarters on Newport Way. I do not yet have an agenda, however, but that's the next meeting, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee is going to be meeting next Thursday, November 12th. That's a different day than usual due to the Veterans Day holiday. We have three actions, potential actions, regional boards and committee appointments, which is going to be even less exciting than normal years because we're trying to not make a lot of changes because we're in the middle of COVID. There is, there's gonna be, I don't wanna say potential action, there's an action item for consideration on emergency management zone coordinators, and I am gonna take a little time during the, for good of the order, this evening to discuss that. The city of Issaquah has taken a position on this in the past, but I would like to put this in front of my fellow councilmembers so I can represent our view to pick. And then there's also a potential future action, which means we won't take final action this month on the 2021 SEA legislative agenda. Then the Puget Sound Regional Council's Growth Management Policy Board is going to be meeting Thursday, November 19th, and that agenda has not been released yet. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Deputy Council President Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Chris Ray. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Council President Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council President Hunt. The Title 18 Land Use Ad Hoc Committee met on October 29th. This is a committee of Councilmembers Goodman, Walsh, and myself, and we are reviewing Title 18, which is the land use part of our municipal code, and we're reviewing the plan for improving this code. So we, at this meeting, reviewed the budget plan, and we reviewed the path forward in terms of how we intend to continue communicating with council. We will continue these regional reports, updates, when we meet, as well as when there's a big item to bring back to council for consideration, such as, at one of our recent work sessions, when we brought forward the update table with all of the action items and all of the proposed goals that we wanted from the update, we will bring that forward to council at a study session. And we also began to review the public engagement process for the Title 18 overhaul process, and we will be using the public engagement toolkit that the city has, that's accessible on the city's website. We'll be using that as the sort of backbone of our public engagement process, and we'll continue to strategize about how we can best engage the public in this process at our next meeting of the Council Ad Hoc Committee for Title 18, which will be on November 12th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. The next item up this evening is the Mayor's Report. There is no executive session this evening. I did want to take a few minutes to talk about the Green Issaquah Program and the orientation that happened last week. The city hosted a Green Issaquah Orientation by a WebEx last Wednesday night, October 28th, and over 30 residents took part in the meeting. The Green Issaquah Partnership is a collaborative effort between the city of Issaquah, Forterra, community groups, nonprofits, schools, businesses, and hundreds of volunteers to restore and maintain our forested parks and open spaces. The partnership will build upon existing citywide community stewardship efforts to foster long-term support for restoration and maintenance of Issaquah's parks and natural areas. The purpose of the meeting was to highlight the program as part of Forterra's broader Green Cities Initiative, to share the Issaquah-based work completed to date, including the forest assessment, and to invite residents to become a forest steward and/or consider ways to get engaged with Green Issaquah as a volunteer in a variety of different ways. Staff from Forterra, Mountains of Sound Greenway Trust, and the city shared in the presentation and the Q&amp;A session with attendees. For anyone who missed the meeting, it was recorded and is posted on the Green Issaquah webpage on the city's website. Coming up in the months ahead, forest steward orientation and training, all within safe and smart public health protocols, will begin so that we can launch this exciting partnership. Also, I wanted to take a few minutes to talk about eviction mediation services. This is an item that the council has been talking about a lot over the last few months. At the September 21st, 2020 City Council Meeting, council authorized the allocation of $250,000 from the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, funds toward human services to organizations providing food and other basic needs, housing stability, and homelessness prevention, as well as mental health services. One of the proposed housing stability measures was to utilize CARES Act funding for mediation services as a response to the expected increase in residential eviction cases due to the economic impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. The city is in the process of entering into a contractual agreement with the Dispute Resolution Center of King County, a nonprofit organization providing a wide range of conflict resolution services, to ensure that mediation services are available free of cost to Issaquah landlords and tenants wishing to solve disputes prior to the commencement of any unlawful detainer action. There is evidence showing that landlords and tenants who participate in mediation services and/or training will be more likely to resolve their differences, resulting in reasonable settlements. Issaquah residents who would like to access these services may contact the Dispute Resolution Center of King County directly by phone at (206) 443-9603, or via email at drcinfo@kcdrc.org. There's also an upcoming recycling event for tires, batteries, motor oil, and pesticides. In partnership with the Issaquah School District Hazardous Waste Management Program in King County and the King County Solid Waste Division, we're offering a place to bring hard-to-recycle items. The event will be held from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, November 7th, 2020, at Issaquah High School. Please be safe, wear masks and gloves, and pack your items so they can be removed quickly and easily. No vehicles may enter after 3:00 PM. Only participants in cars will be provided service. Walk-ups are not allowed at this time. Many items will be accepted free of charge, such as 18-inch and below tires off the rim, lead, acid, and other batteries, antifreeze, motor oil, and pesticides and poison. For a more detailed list of additional items that are accepted and any related fees, please go online to issaquahwad.gov. And my last item for this evening is elections. King County has over 1.4 million registered voters, and 70% of voters have already cast their ballot. I just got that updated, it's actually 75%, so I think I'm gonna say, say up-to-date current number. Keep them coming. Return your ballot before November 3rd, 3:00 PM. The nearest ballot drop box in Issaquah is located at City Hall at 130 East Sunset Way. And that concludes the Mayor's Report. The next item on our agenda this evening is the Consent Calendar. It was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
Also, they have.
Thank you very much. Does any councilmember desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? I guess it'd help if I had the chat open. I'm not seeing anyone. Council President Hunt, is there any public comment that you received by email sent to the council on any items on the consent calendar that you would like to share?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did not receive any emails on the consent calendar agenda this evening.
That's great. Is anybody willing to make a motion? Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I move to adopt the consent calendar as it appears in this evening's agenda.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray?
This is Chris Ray. I second.
It's been moved and seconded, and I'll get the City Clerk to take the roll call vote.
Beginning with Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember D. Michelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
And Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, your own ayes.
Thank you, City Clerk. That passes unanimously, and we'll go on to our next item of business this evening, which is under regular business. The next item is AB 7990, the Proposed 2021 Budget Levy and Revenue Sources, and the action before council this evening is to adopt the ordinance and approve the resolution. This item was last before council for a public hearing at the October 19th council meeting, and I'd like to invite Finance Director Beth Goldberg to make a brief presentation. Welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I have a short presentation this evening about the property tax levy ordinance and substantial need resolution that is before you for consideration this evening, and I will just jump in here. At the October 19th City Council Meeting, there was a public hearing on the property tax levy and revenues as required by state law, and tonight, we've got before you a substantial need resolution, as well as the annual property tax levy ordinance before you for consideration and approval. So as a reminder, property tax represents about 21% of the general funds, $46.6 million worth of revenues as proposed, it's about $9.8 million is what that translates into. State law allows jurisdictions to increase property tax annually by 1% or the implicit price deflator, whichever is lower, plus the value of new construction. Most years, the implicit price deflator, which is a measure of inflation, is above 1%, but for 2021, the implicit price deflator is below 1%. It's a .605%. And so the city council has a choice whether to levy the 1% or the .605%. In order to levy the 1%, the city council would need to declare a special need by adopting a substantial need resolution that is before you this evening. The administration does recommend that the city council adopt the substantial need resolution. So a little bit of background, talked about this on October 19th as well, but just to ground everyone, it's fairly uncommon for the implicit price deflator to fall below 1%. In the last 10 years, there's only been two times where this has occurred. In the last 10 years, there's only been two times where this has occurred, and in both of those years, the city council adopted a substantial need resolution or ordinance. So there is precedent for the city doing this in the past. If the value or what the substantial need resolution will mean for the city is it will protect about $38,000 worth of property tax revenues. If the city were to not adopt the substantial need resolution and levy the implicit price deflator, the .605, we would collect annually about $38,000 left, less, excuse me. In terms of how this impacts the average property owner, it represents about $2.65 annually in 2021. And so what the administration is recommending, as I said at the outset, is for the council to adopt the substantial need resolution, as well as the property tax levy ordinance. And with that, I would be happy to respond to any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Director Goldberg. Before we go to questions, I was going to check in with Council President Hunt to see if the public had written in any comments on this item that you'd like to share.
Thank you, Mayor. We did not receive public comments by email specifically on this AB.
That's great. Thank you. I'm going to be checking the chat to see which council members are interested in asking Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Director Goldberg, if we do not take the substantial need item this year, is it something that we could do in future years in order to? Like, I know in the past, if we haven't chosen to increase by the 1% that we're allowed, we can potentially go back in a future year and do that.
So what you're referring to, Councilmember Walsh, is banked capacity. So in a more traditional year, if the implicit price deflator was above 1%, as is most often the case, the city is allowed to levy the 1%. If the city decided not to levy the 1% in those years, it could bank the capacity to be used at a later time. The city did this, I believe, around 2014, and you might recall that last year, we then levied the banked capacity. In a year where the implicit price deflator is below 1%, technically, there is no capacity to bank, because technically, the maximum you would levy would be the .605 unless you declared a substantial need. I believe, and I'd want to do a little bit more research on this, I believe that there might be a mechanism to bank the difference between the .6 and the 1%, but you would still have to declare a substantial need, and that could potentially be, seem a little bit incongruous if you're declaring a substantial need because there is a need for those property taxes, but then not actually levying it and saving it for some undetermined period of time. You know, that could be perceived as a little bit incongruous. I will also note that because the amount of property tax levied is related to the amount collected in the previous year, that if we were to implement the implicit price deflator or not take the substantial need, then the base upon which property tax is growing for all future years will be depressed by that amount, and it will accumulate over time. So in many respects, you know, in this instance, once it's gone, it's gone, and there wouldn't be an opportunity to recoup it as there would be in a more traditional year where we levied the 1% and maybe banked the capacity in that year.
Thank you. Yes, that answers your question, Councilmember Walsh?
Yes, it does.
I will then move to Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Hall. And thank you, Director Goldberg. The second half of your answer answered my first question. My second question is if adopting a substantial need resolution has any impact on our future bonding capacity or how bonding agencies view the city?
I'm not sure it would, I'm not sure it would impact how the rating agencies would view the city, with the exception of, and it's a little bit indirect, but, you know, they're looking at the financial health of the city. And if we've got a structural deficit and, you know, not levying revenues that are available to us, then, you know, there may be, it would be foregone revenues that then could impact future financial outlook. But that being said, you know, we're talking about $38,000. So it's not a significant amount. It's not like we're talking about, you know, a third of our property tax revenue or anything like that. But we know that we're facing some structural challenges in the out years, and this would be foregone. So in that respect, it would be an opportunity that wouldn't necessarily come back to us.
Thank you, Director Goldberg. I'm also going to have City Administrator Bob Kowits weigh in on this from a different angle, and that is that this is currently one of the things on council's draft legislative agenda is a request to the state that this 1% be lifted. And just have him talk about why that is on our legislative agenda and what not taking it this year might do to those advocacy efforts. City Administrator Bob Kowits?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. As Mayor Polly mentioned, this has been something that has been part of our legislative agenda. Currently, it is on our 2020 legislative agenda to support lifting the 1% cap on property tax with the Washington State Legislature. You'll be talking more about the legislative agenda coming up on Thursday evening this week, and it is also included in our draft agenda for 2021. This has been in the legislature for the last couple of sessions, but unfortunately, those bills have not made it on a committee. And discussing this with our state lobbyist Shelley Holder, staff, the administration feels that's probably also unlikely coming up, given all the other issues that are coming up in the Washington State Legislature in 21. But certainly, it's one of those things that will likely take some time, and the administration is going to continue to support this and recommend that the council support it in the 2021 legislative agenda.
Thank you, Administrator Bob Kowits. I'm looking to see if there are any more questions. And if there are no additional questions, is someone prepared to make a motion? Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I move to approve Resolution Number 2020-15, making a declaration of substantial need for setting the property tax levy for 2021 and adopt Ordinance Number 2925, levying property taxes for the City of Issaquah for the fiscal year commencing January 1st, 2021, on all property, both real and personal in said city, which is subject to taxation for the purposes of paying sufficient revenue to carry on the services of said city for the ensuing year as required by law.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray?
This is Chris Ray. I second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? And I'll keep my eye on the chat box to see if anybody wishes to make comments. Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 2020-15, making a declaration of substantial need for setting the property tax levy. Oops, sorry, nope. I got a comment from Council President Hunt, so I'm going to slow down. Council President Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council President Hunt. I just wanted to speak to why I would support this. We do, in addition to this being on our past legislative agenda to lift the 1% levy cap to give more ability for cities to use this as a revenue source, it's also the SCA, on the SCA legislative agenda, so it's not just our city, it's many cities in the state. And I think that it is important for that reason, as well as for the structural reasons that Beth mentions, that we continue to use this revenue to support the services of the city. Thanks.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Seeing no other comments, the motion that's on the table is to approve Resolution Number 2020-15, making a declaration of substantial need for setting the property tax levy for 2021, and adopt Ordinance Number 2925, levying property taxes for the City of Issaquah for the fiscal year commencing January 1st, 2021, on all property, both real and personal in said city, which is subject to taxation for the purpose of paying sufficient revenue to carry on the services of said city for the ensuing year as required by law. And I will go to the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Yes, beginning with Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember DeMichelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays. Mayor, you're muted.
I'm going to go bankrupt tonight. Okay. Thank you, city clerk. That passes unanimously. Get my script back up. The next item on our agenda this evening is AB 8065, the Police Accountability Equity and Human Services Action Plan update. The council will be hearing a presentation this evening and providing some direction to the administration. The plan was adopted by council at the August 10th council meeting, and this is the first quarterly update. I'd like to invite City Administrator Bob Kowits to present this item. Wally?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. On August 10th, the city council endorsed the mayor's Police Accountability Equity and Human Services Action Plan. Now, we spent a good part of our summer talking about this plan and talking about the various steps on the plan. But we're here this evening for our first quarterly update on the plan. I'm joined by a cavalcade of city staff that will be here to answer any questions that you may have as we go through the proposals or, excuse me, the initiatives. There are three specific issues that the administration would like to bring particular attention to, to the council this evening. And as we get to those points on the plan, I'll stop and pause, but they are further discussion regarding school resource officers, any next steps that the city council would like to entertain as far as its outreach with the police department staff, and then next steps for city council equity training. So the deputy clerk has put up the report, so we can go to the next page. If you recall, members of the council, there were three categories of actions, a short, medium, and long-term. Short actions that we are proposing to work on. The short-term actions, which were by August 31st, the council and the police department, through a variety of public meetings, reviewed our current use of force policy, and so that piece has been completed. We continue in the next section on police department reporting. We have developed a new monthly report that we are making available to members of the public. We've had the first month of that report posted, and we'll do a regular push of that report during the month of October, in the website, in October and beginning now in November, have a regular push to the community on that. Autumn Monahan and Chief Erbaum are with us this evening. Chief, do you want to say anything about how this reporting is a little bit different than what we have been previously doing?
Our current report really is just trying to give a quick overview of our call responded to, our numbers of our 911 calls, and some basic of our more serious crimes, just to provide updates on a monthly basis and a year-to-date basis. We'll again, update those each month. The October ones should be posted here in this next week, just to continue to provide that information. It's just a brief snapshot, and then, of course, it's encouraging our community members then to also look further at the data that's available, kind of through our self-searching options on the website.
Great. Thank you very much, Chief. And I thought that Assistant to the City Administrator, Autumn Monahan, was on, but I do not see that she is. But we have made this available on the website, so people can sign up as a newsletter to get that pushed. And I believe you can go, Chief, to the police department website, and there's a link there to get that. The next item was city council equity training. We did the first equity training with the city council over the summer, and one of the points for discussion, Madam Mayor, I'd like to get some feedback from the council about that training and any additional thoughts about next steps that the council would like to do for training. So, Madam Mayor, would you like to, you need to go through all of this and then come back to those three items I mentioned at the beginning, or would you just like to take them as we encounter them?
I'm kind of looking at council, not seeing much in the way of strong opinion. I think it's up to you. Do you want to just start with this first one then, on the training?
Sure. Again, we would like to offer the council whatever you think would be appropriate. The training that we did was sort of a 30,000-foot training. There were lots of specific issues raised. We would be happy to come back to the council with a couple of alternatives as far as maybe some additional training. Also curious if the time was right, that it was an evening's training previously. If that timeframe makes sense, we could shoot to do that again the next time, and probably not before the end of the year, but we would perhaps could schedule something right at the first of the year, if the council's interested.
That sounds great. I believe that Councilmember DeMichelle would like to make a comment.
Thank you. And first of all, my appreciation for the training that was held. It was filled with really interesting and helpful information. The part that I missed was the ability of the council to debrief at the end and to have a conversation about what does this all mean and how does it apply to Issaquah. And so I would like to see us in future trainings, and I would support having future trainings, do a little bit more on how we can affect actually our local community, and a little bit more time for the council to absorb and debrief on the information we've received. But I do think it was, I've taken the information I received that night and applied it in many different contexts, and so I am appreciative that we did have that opportunity. So, thank you.
Great comment. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I agree, the training was fantastic, and having the, I forget the woman's name who led it, was just magnificent. That being said, I'm fine with doing another training, but I really would love to be able to focus on our community and our needs. And so the more that we can hear from our community members, as well as spend time with the council ourselves, talking about the way we see things moving forward, I think that in my mind gets to action. And so that would be my preference. That being said, happy to do more training. I just don't want it to be there instead of moving some things forward.
Thank you, Councilmember, yeah, I see that. Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Benita Horn was the instructor last time. I'm just looking in the chat to see if anyone else would like to comment on that. And Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. One thing that's also on the longer-term actions for this plan is around the toolkit, developing a racial equity toolkit. And one thing that I thought we might benefit from training in as a council would be what, how that would work, how we might use it as a council, how we might take different actions.
actions using that, how it's worked in other cities, and that kind of thing. So, like Councilmember Walsh, I'd like to start thinking through the actions parts, and so, training that would help us better orient us in that direction, I think, would be valuable.
Thank you. Any other comments? City Administrator Bob Kowits, do you have everything you need on that first item?
I do. I think we heard two different kinds of training, one that's a little bit more Issaquah-specific, having community leaders talk about some of the specific needs in Issaquah, and then the second dealing with an equity toolkit, and certainly we can work on both of those. So, we'll shoot to have the first one of those, the first of the year, and perhaps the second one in the late winter, early spring, and we'll, we'll look at a evening again, as we did the last training. So, thank you for that. The next item on the short-term actions was reporting, and we're here this evening doing that first quarter report, on the next page. Then we're into the medium-term actions, Madam Mayor, but I'll stop there just briefly to see if there's any other comments regarding those first August 31 actions.
Not seeing any right now, City Administrator, so it's probably good to go ahead.
Great. The next set are the medium-term actions that we're working on this fall, to be accomplished by the end of the year. The first deals with the police department budget and operations review, and the council has heard presentation last week by the police chief talking a little bit about this, as well as Monica Negrilla, our human services coordinator, how we will hopefully be looking to include human services. There was a question by a community member this evening about that. Again, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to have Monica kind of quickly summarize what our current plans are, would that be helpful, just to reiterate that?
I do, I think that'd be very helpful, thank you.
Ms. Negrilla, I think you're on the line, if you could talk a little bit about the conversations you've been having with Chief Birbaum on what our next steps will be if the council approves the budgeted position that's proposed.
Thank you so much, City Administrator. Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the council, this is Monica Negrilla. Currently, if the council approves the budget, we are hoping to move forward with hiring a mental health professional. This would be a licensed clinician who has the ability to conduct assessments on site, and we are hoping to provide, or to seek for a variable schedule, especially the swing shift would be ideal, as from initial data, we do understand and know that evenings or night times are in higher need. This would also combine the existing human services staff that we have during the day, so while we are not going to be able to provide 24/7 coverage in 2021, we will extend that coverage just from the 9 to 5 typical shift. And I'm gonna stop here, I can certainly provide more details, but that's the initial overview.
Thank you, Monica.
And I think it's also important to point out that, you know, this proposal is not replacing police officers. Obviously, police officers will continue to respond to appropriate calls for service as they do now. We really see this as a partnership, as we work with the community, as we work with police staff during the course of next year. Certainly, we would anticipate coming back to the council as part of the 2022 budget process with additional recommendations on how to do this. So, many communities are grappling with this as we are, and I think we're looking to make the best decisions for Issaquah. That pretty much covers the police and operations review, some of the other...
City Administrator, I believe you have a question from Councilmember Hall?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Polly, this is Councilmember Hall. Thanks, City Administrator, for letting me interrupt real quickly. I was going to ask if someone could speak to, during public comment tonight, I think her name was Julia, had brought up some concerns that you had, or that she had, and you actually spoke to some of it just now. The other concern that she had was the market for mental health professionals. I hadn't thought about that before, so I wondered if administration had thought about that, and if there's anything we know about, kind of the market that's out there right now.
Certainly, I guess I would look to Ms. Negrilla, who I think keeps pretty close tabs on the marketplace here in the Seattle metro region. Ms. Negrilla, what are, what's the marketplace look like?
Yes, the market actually for quality licensed mental health professional is indeed challenging, just because typically, a good licensed mental health clinician will move up into management positions, and so, finding someone who's gonna provide direct services typically takes quite a bit of time. In my previous experience, I was looking for three to almost six months into finding the right clinician, so that definitely is a challenge.
But certainly, I think we, we as an employer, bring a variety of attributes, in addition to a good competitive wage. Our benefit package is retirement, is something that many nonprofits are not able to provide. So, again, I think as Mr. Negrilla has said, it's a competitive market, but I think what we'll be able to do, and I think as we have sized the position that we'll be working in the police department, I think we're hopeful that it will be a attractive position.
Okay, I think, City Administrator Bob Kowits, if you want to continue with the presentation?
Thank you. Other processes at the police department that we're working on, a use-of-force review and reporting, we're in the process of creating an internal review committee for all use-of-force complaints that will be made up with the city attorney, myself, the chief of police, and Ms. Negrilla, to view those complaints from a variety of different perspectives. It's a process that I've used in another jurisdiction in which I've worked, and it's a very good process, I think, to have multiple sets of eyes, look at those complaints to make sure that they're being adjudicated properly. So, we're working on establishing that committee, and that will be done by the end of the year. The next area is the police department complaint process. Again, the department has a current process, I'm working with Chief Birbaum to review that process, to see if there are improvements that we can make, and again, those discussions are continuing, and we're on track to make those changes by the end of the calendar year. Next is police department data collection and reporting. As we've mentioned, we've instituted at least one change already to how we are reporting on data, that's something we're continuing to look at, we're looking at best practices of other jurisdictions. Most of those best practices revolve around online, self-serve, if you will, portals where individuals can look at particular addresses and see complaints that are made, and so we're going to continue to look and make sure that what we have online makes the most sense, and is comparable to other jurisdictions we would like to be like. So, that is something we're looking at, and we should have that review done by the end of the calendar year. Next page. The next item is the use of school resource officers. This has been discussed on a couple of different occasions by the council. When this action plan was confirmed by the council a few months ago, we knew that the Issaquah School Board was going to be having a retreat sometime in the early fall, let's talk about this. Just recently, the city council's leadership group, the council president and the deputy council president, and I met with the leadership of the Issaquah School Board on this subject. They informed us that upon their review, they continue to feel that having a school resource officer, not only at their high school here in Issaquah, but also their schools in other parts of the district, which are serviced by the King County Sheriff's Department, continues to make sense. And so, they have let us know that they would like to continue with this, but certainly there has been discussion by the council and members of the community on this issue, and so, the administration would like to take this opportunity this evening, to see if the council has any other direction, or other investigation, or other discussion that you'd like to schedule regarding keeping that school resource officer in place. Chief Birbaum is here, there were some questions raised by the school board leadership on training, which he shared that information this afternoon with the council, so he's certainly happy to answer any questions that might come up.
And there are many. This is the mayor, I will start with Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you. Yes, I have, I have questions and comments about this item, and I'm wondering if Chief Birbaum, if he would be willing to, just for the public to hear, I was fascinated by the amount of training that the SROs have to have, and I was wondering if you could just summarize that for the public, so that they can hear that as well, because it is extensive training. I was particularly interested in how, whether or not SROs got training in adolescent development and those kinds of things, and so, if you could just review that briefly, I would really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. In regards to school resource officer training, by actually state law, they are required to be trained in multiple topics, from everything from constitutional and civil rights of children in schools, child and adolescent development, trauma and form approaches, with working with youth, educational rights of students with disabilities, resources available in the community to, for like diversion for youth, and de-escalation techniques, state law regarding restraint and isolation in schools, of course, bias-free policing and cultural competency, and, and others. In addition to that, per state law, the police department, Issaquah Police Department, does focus on our, on our core officer training, that does focus around crisis intervention, our basic or advanced, specifically working with youth, and of course, de-escalation. Each one of our SROs attends additional training, which is, has like a nationally-recognized basic school resource officer training program, that really focuses on the triad of the school resource officer approach of enforcement and crime reduction, counseling, mentoring, and then, of course, teaching or working within the classrooms. In addition to the basic, we want our SROs to attend our advanced school resource officer training, which is an additional focus on collaboration within the schools, social media training, violence reduction, and then on top of that, we want our SROs also to attend training with adolescent mental health training as well. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I do have a follow-up question for you too, but I always feel like I have to do a full disclosure on this. I was a member of the Issaquah School Board when they approved SROs, and I heard from the public comment tonight, I think a perception has grown up around SROs, that they are there to prevent mass shootings, and the Issaquah School Board approved the SROs and had them in schools long before Columbine happened, and the focus was not on preventing mass shootings, but instead on prevention of drug trafficking, prevention of other crimes that might happen around schools and so forth. So, I did want to know how, how often, or whether or not our SROs are still dealing with drug issues around our schools and drug trafficking issues, how common is that, is that still a focus of the work that they're doing?
I would not say, thank you for that question, I would not say that the drug investigation is the focus of that program, it is, of course, one of the auxiliary duties of enforcement of crimes associated with schools. It truly comes down to a partnership with the, with the individual school. Each one of the school resource officers that are in the Issaquah School District, of course, are working with different jurisdictions. Issaquah High School is working with the Issaquah Police Department, and of course, we partner with our school administration on those different issues, and things that we're investigating are everything from, yes, drugs, but we're also addressing dating violence, there's a lot of social media investigations, or theft, fraud, driving, there's a lot of different issues that our school resource officers do get up, get involved with.
I appreciate that, and I understand that that is a much wider area that, that they cover, and so, I have some comments, but I'd rather hear the questions from my fellow council members, and then maybe come back and make a comment at the end. Thank you.
That sounds great. Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Council, the next question I see on here is from Councilmember Walsh, but I'll just check in. Councilmember Martz, is yours a question or a comment? Okay. Councilmember Hall, question or comment?
Comment, Councilmember Walsh, you can go ahead.
Great. Councilmember Walsh, you're up.
Thank you. So, it's my understanding that we as a city pay a portion of the SRO salary, or rather, I guess we pay all of it because they're an IPD employee, and then the school board, the school district pays half of that back. Is that correct?
Thank you for that question, I can answer this, City Administrator Bob Kowits. It is approximately $70,000 a year of what we receive from the school district. It is a little, it's a little, it's around approximately half.
Okay. Following on that, what are, what are our powers or our responsibilities when it comes to any staffing in the school? I mean, I understand that this is a Issaquah Police Department employee, and thus a city employee, but do we have the ability to tell the school whether or not they can have a school resource officer, or is this really just a financial conversation as far as the city's responsibility?
The, it is actually an agreement between the city and the school district. There is a MOU or ILA that is, that addresses this, that we negotiate, or we have this conversation every three years, is when we have to renew the, renew the MOU with the school district. So, it is something that it would be a joint decision.
Let me take that one step further. If we as a city said, nope, we don't agree to it, is there, are there other choices that the school district has, such as bringing in King County Sheriff's Office, like they do in other parts of the district, that, or if we say no, then they have no options?
Typically, the jurisdiction would still fall for Issaquah High School, or Issaquah Middle School would fall for the City of Issaquah Police Department to respond to any criminal activities that are, that are going on within, within the schools. Ultimately, what would occur is if we chose not to have a school resource officer, is then, any call for service that arose from that would just get the, an on-duty patrol officer to respond. One of the benefits of the school resource officer position is the relationship building and having, having that relationship with the, the individuals within the schools, understanding how the interaction of the schools, management of issues within the school versus what a law enforcement response would be. So, some of that would be lost, of course, and the ability to navigate some of those complex issues would possibly be slowed down or lost. But ultimately, Issaquah Police Department provides the policing services for Issaquah High School and the schools that are within the City of Issaquah.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate the answers.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Looks like Deputy Council President Ray has a question?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Chris Ray, I'm gonna pick up a little bit where Councilmember Walsh left off, but Chief, can you talk about, from the city's perspective and from Issaquah Police Department's perspective, what are the benefits of us having an SRO deployed at the high schools?
Absolutely, thank you for that question. If you, if you permit me, I think some of you have heard my stories before, but I was one of the first school resource officers for the City of Issaquah, at the Issaquah High School. Prior to us being within schools, the relationships and trust that we had between law enforcement and youth, I think were at a lower level. I was introduced on the first day of school at a pep rally, and when I got introduced, I received boos and pig calls to, and, you know, to, to me being there. I answered by, you know, expressing I appreciated their enthusiastic welcome, and, but, and then, you know, jumped right in to, you know, endeavor to start building those relationships. After a few months, we started, the next time there was a pep rally and I was introduced, I was actually getting some sort of, you know, a positive response. A few months later, I started getting officers coming up to me and asking me, what are you doing? And I asked them back, what do you mean, what am I doing? I said, well, we have kids now coming up and talking to us on the street. People who are coming up and feeling comfortable and talking with us. And that's the difference. That's the, that's the relationship and that trust and that personal interaction, I think, that will be lost without having that. So that's, that's one of those opportunities of building that public trust. That is what we're about. It provides an opportunity for, similar to what I said earlier, with the kind of the triad concept of school resource officers, yes, there is the enforcement aspect, but really, it's about counseling and mentoring, and also working within the classroom. Our SROs do have a chance to help a lot of individuals and also prevent some issues from occurring. So the benefits are providing that, building that public trust, building those relationships, helping prevent issues that we can get, maybe get people to resources that they need prior to it become, rising to the level of crisis, or prior to it rising to the level of enforcement action.
Deputy Counsel President Ray?
Just a quick follow-on, if I might. How do you respond to Mr. Whitfield's comments about youth of color and their reaction to police officers in the schools?
I appreciate his comment, and it is one of those that, just like he said, our intent is never to harm someone. Ultimately, we want to create a positive environment within our community, whether it's a learning environment or just a positive, safe environment. You know, it obviously saddens me as a police officer that that is the impact, that is potentially, from just, you know, being present in any interaction within our community, whether it's in a school or within a community. So we're committed to working to try and change that, trying to change it for the positive. So I do appreciate the comment, and I recognize that anytime that we do show up, that we do show up with, there is a firearm present. And so that always can potentially create anxiety with some of our community members.
Deputy Counsel President Ray?
Great, thank you, Chief.
I just want to thank you for asking that question, because I do believe one of the commitments we've made as a council and as a city and as administration is that we're going to hear from voices we don't typically hear from. And so we need to listen to them for the solutions as well. We may not be able to solve the problem by talking it out tonight, but we heard something, and we need to continue to work with the groups that are coming to talk to us. So thank you for asking that question. I'm looking down to see if, Councilmember Goodman, looks like you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I was going to follow up on that as well. That was going to be my question. Chris Ray asked about response to James Whitfield, so that was going to be my question, which is why I said, never mind. And then I would, I guess it's not, do we have an idea, Chief, about how we may, do we have a plan about how we're going to address that? I mean, I know we're not going to be able to solve it with one action item, but I think, I think hearing, listening, and appreciating comments is probably not good enough for me. I mean, we made a commitment to the community with our action plan, and if we're talking about resource offices from school, that's having a negative impact on students of color, that's a big deal. So do we have more than, more of a plan than just knowing it's an issue?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Goodman. One of the conversations, or some of the conversations that we've had over the spring and into the summer is with some of our Isaguas School District Equity Members, to have that conversation about school resource officers as well. I do believe that we are, well, internally, we are looking at the right fit for the school as well, for a school resource officer that of course, can help address those issues. But as a city and as a police department, you were right, we're not going to be able to solve it tonight, because we are talking about systemic issues that have put us in this position. And we are, again, I don't have a great answer for you tonight, but as I said, we have systemic issues across our nation and in law enforcement, in a lot of different aspects of society that have put us in this position. But we want to work together with the schools to try and address that. And as our police officers, if, and as we interact with youth, whether or not we're in the schools or not, and if we respond to the schools, we are still going to respond, and we want to see if there are some things that we can do by building better relationships, having these conversations, you know, head-on with the different groups that are impacted, to try and address this for the long term. But we do have systemic issues within society that have put us in this position, and I guess we're going to have to keep working towards addressing that as a community. So I don't have a perfect answer for you tonight, but I want to see if we can figure out how to address it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And before I go to Council President Hunt's question, I'm going to let City Administrator Bob Kowitz chime in.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, one of the things we're here tonight to do is try to get some direction. So if there's an interest in having an additional community dialogue, obviously, the elephant in the room of sorts is the schools aren't in session and in person. So there is perhaps some time to have that discussion, or any other direction you would like to give us this evening. So perhaps Madam Mayor wants, the councils had questions and comments, so we would certainly look for direction if there's additional next steps that you'd like us to proceed with.
Great. So here is my list so far. Martz is next up with a question, followed by Hunt, followed by Walsh. And I do have noted down for comments afterwards, Martz, Hall, and DeMichele, and that list can expand. So let's go to Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. Yeah, my question was around, given that we are in COVID right now, what are we doing with our current school resource officer? And when do we project to be returning an SRO to Isaguas High?
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Our current use of our school resource officer, actually, he is assigned to our patrol division, and he is currently responding to calls for service on one of the squads. We've been in constant conversation with the school district of trying to figure out when we're going to have students within the campuses on a more regular basis. Then we will, of course, have that conversation of what that looks like, what that return to campus looks like. We have been dealing with, over the summer and even as part of the fall, our school resource officer still has been a point of contact for some of our staff members within the school district, and has addressed or investigated some issues that are directly related with youth crimes and some of these other issues, because he does have some of those connections and within the school district, and is able to get a hold of the right resources. So it's kind of a wait-and-see of when we, schools come back in session, of when maybe a school resource officer would then return to the campus proper, but they're still are connected remotely, as we all are right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Council President Hunt?
Thank you, this is Council President Hunt. Could you explain the MOU process and when we would review the MOU? You mentioned every three years.
Yes, I will have to get back to you here in just a little bit. I'll have to look at the exact date. I don't want to give you the wrong date of when we're due for it next. I will look that up here and provide it here in the next few minutes.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's a question, follow-up question for the chief. Does the MOU come to council? And I only ask that because in other organizations, ILAs come, which are interlocal agreements, memorandums of understanding, I'm not sure that they always come. It seems like there's an interest to see it and be a part. I just don't remember the process. But anyway, when you bring it up, if you could clarify that as well, so the council understands their process? Looks like we have another question. Councilmember Walsh?
This is Councilmember Walsh. I'm afraid mine's also a timing question. So, City Administrator Bob Kowitz, you talked about, you know, since school isn't in session, we could potentially come back and have a conversation on this. So my question was, do we have a timeline or anything that we have to have something signed or something decided, either because of our budget or because of the MOU?
Councilmember Walsh, members of the council, there's not a specific timeframe that I have in mind. I'm not myself sure exactly when the MOU is up. Hopefully, the chief will have that information shortly. But if this is something that the council would like further discussion on, we can certainly go back to the school district, see if they'd like to join us with some sort of community gathering, then I think it's just a matter of looking at the calendar. Now that we're in the month of November, it may be difficult to do this before the end of the year, and I don't know that there's necessarily that urgency to do that, but certainly, we could do something right at the beginning of 2021.
So there's no constraints or requirements for the budget, because the existing SRO is just doing regular duties, and so would continue to be in our budget if we were not, if we didn't make a decision about the SROs?
That's correct, and the Isaguas School District has indicated that they will continue making their financial contributions. So we're kind of at a status quo, despite the fact there's, the school's not in session.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like the chief has some information on the MOU. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor Paulie. I apologize. The MOU is actually, shall remain in effect through June 30th, 2021. So as we get into 2021, that's an opportunity, and yes, we have, we have signed it through June 30th, 2021. So we will have an opportunity in 2021 to fully review this.
Thank you. There was a picture of me this weekend with Mary Poppins, so I didn't know if that's where you were going, at the food bank drive. But anyway, kind of funny. I am not seeing any additional questions, but I am seeing folks lining up for comments. So let's start with, I had Councilmember Martz, followed by Hall, followed by DeMichele, followed by Council President Hunt. So, Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. So I certainly am concerned to hear that some members of the community do not feel that the SRO is a net positive to their children's experience. I want to understand that better. We didn't have SROs when I was a kid. I, I think it's great that they are involved in trying to reduce drugs. However, I'm also concerned, I feel like the biggest problem with drugs is home parties and parents who are tolerant of alcohol and other drug use in the homes, where unfortunately, we can't do anything about. I don't really feel equipped today to make a decision. So I'd like to know, I'd like to get more information about outcomes. Nowadays, how do, what is the impact of SROs in schools? What is the impact specifically to communities of color? What are the outcomes in terms of impact on incidents of racism and racial bullying? If we can get that information, so we can know what the impact is, both for, you know, I recognize that officers have a different feel for folks in the majority of the community versus minority elements of the community. So whatever we can get on outcomes for the impact of SROs in our schools, that would help me have a better understanding of any decision that would be in front of council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. I'm going to move to Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, this is Councilmember Hall. I think our city administrator's suggestion was a good one. I would like to see if the city and the school district could hold a joint community convening with students and parents and other interested community members about SROs earlier next year, if that's possible, and if the school district's interested. You know, it's clear none of us have the full picture or the answer here, so I think it'd be a good idea to have a conversation through the context of school and student safety, yes, but also student behavioral health and trauma-informed policy development, to make sure we're not making students feel uncomfortable in a place where they're not ready to learn, and not in a good place to learn. So anyways, I'd be interested in what other council members think about that, administration thinks about that, and if that's something we could approach the school district. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you. I, I still generally support the concept of SROs in the school, because I do know the good things that they've done, and it's some very, very sensitive situations with young people. I had the privilege recently of meeting with the Student Equity Council, which is different from the Equity Council that the school district has. And I want to underline something that Mayor Paulie said, that, which is, the answers are in our community. And I do believe that our young people have a lot of the answers. They are incredibly astute about their own situations. They are articulate about those situations, and they are willing to voice their concerns, but also willing to consider many different options. So I would be leery of any kind of plan that's put together only by adults. I think this has to be something that the students participate in fully. And sometimes, a public gathering is not the best place for young people to express themselves. So we need to take that into consideration as we're building and putting together whatever we're going to do. The other thing, going back to the misperceptions that I talked about earlier, that school resource officers are there to prevent mass shootings, I think it would be really good for us to have a very clear statement put together. What is the role of an SRO? What's the purpose of an SRO? And what are our goals in terms of what we expect the SRO to achieve for us? And I think a statement like that would be very helpful as we go into whatever public discussion we deal. So I think that's, I think that's it. This is obviously a point of passion for me, so thank you for having this discussion tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Lots of good ideas here. Council President Hunt is up next.
Thank you, this is Council President Hunt. Council Deputy President Ray and I have been meeting quarterly with the school district representatives, their leadership also quarterly. And so I think one thing we can do to start preparing for a discussion on this, which I think we should have, is to let them know about this conversation and the issues that have been raised with, by members of the community with regards to SROs. In addition to the individual who called in earlier at this meeting, we did hear from concerns when we first were beginning the work of making the police accountability plan. And I think when we started this work, we asked the community to hold us accountable, and this is one area where I think we have more work to do. So I would like to start a conversation with the school district, take back this conversation to them, and then also look at this more deeply with the community, get all of the voices. I liked what, I liked where Councilmember DeMichele was going with that, making sure that people are comfortable giving us feedback in perhaps different venues than a conventional council meeting like we're in tonight, and making sure we get all of that feedback so we can make a decision. And I think that the timing for the MOU gives us a little bit of time to prepare that kind of a, that kind of a timeline with some community conversation in there. So that would be my recommendation for a way forward.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Deputy, sorry, Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Goodman here. So I agree with the direction we're heading, and I agree with all of the questions that we have. I'm not sure I've heard this directly, but the comment, my comment would be that, you know, the mentioning about, you know, drugs and the war on drugs and trafficking and drug trafficking and all of that, you know, the efforts on the war on drugs have, you know, it's well-known to be, first of all, not successful, and second of all, more relevant to the topic at hand is that it's also a source of racial inequity. So it seems to be, you know, if we've got concerns about SROs in schools that are having impacts on students of color, and not, as Councilmember Martz mentioned, not a net positive for, for the student body as a whole, then I think one of the things that we want to look at is what Councilmember DeMichele mentioned, which is that, you know, the purpose and the role, and get all that clear, and make sure that, that we're, we're using the SRO power for all good stuff, and not ignoring the negative consequences. for all good stuff and not ignoring the negative consequences. So generally, I just agree that we have a lot more questions to be answered, and I appreciate all the thoughtful conversation. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Deputy Council President Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. This is Chris Ray. I'm going to continue down the track a little bit and just add a few cars to the train. I think it was really interesting when Councilmember DeMichele really started us off on this discussion and said, you know, back when I was on the school board and we were first pursuing this notion of SRAs. So what I'm thinking it is time to do is to actually do a reset on SRAs and, and go back to bare metal and say, instead of just playing on the fringes as we move forward, I would like us to reimagine what an SRO could and should, should be, and how that would fit in, and so that we can start to address some of the good that the chief talked about that really does come out of it in terms of building community and relationships. But I think we cannot ignore the impact that it has on clearly students of color, but I also know from having talked to a couple of students that are former students that I know, that it has an impact on others too. So it's not just, you know, minority populations that adversely affects. So as we move forward with this, I would really like to pursue the discussion from a, as I think Councilmember DeMichele was spot on, you know, what's the purpose? Why are we doing this? What's the value proposition? What's, what's in it for the kids? What's in it for the teachers, the parents, and the community? And then start building from the ground up instead of saying, okay, how do we tweak at the edges? So I guess I'm advocating for a really, an open and discussion and the no sacred cow in the role. So I'm excited about this prospect, and I think that the school district will be excited to work with us on this.
Thank you, Deputy, ah, thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. I'm going to check back in with Administrator Bob Kowits. You said you had several items tonight. Do you have additional items that you need to get feedback on?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do. If we're ready to move off this item, I think what I've heard from the council is the desire for a joint community discussion involving the Isaguas School District, working with them through the council's leadership and the school board leadership to craft that, and then have all this eye toward a new MOU that would go into effect, build a part of next year. So we will do that as we move forward. Thank you for those comments. We do have some additional items to share with you on the action plan.
City Administrator Bob Kowits, before we move on, can we take a comment from Councilmember Martz?
Of course.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. Yeah, I just want to make sure that my request for data is in there because I, of course, think it'd be great to engage the community, and I think in particular, Councilmember DeMichele's suggestion to talk to students about their lived experience is, would be hugely beneficial. But I would also like to see hard data. I think nowadays, we sometimes miss some of that when it can be available, and I would like to have that be an element of the conversation. Thank you.
Thanks. And another comment from Councilmember Goodman before we move on.
It will be quick. I completely agree with Councilmember Martz on the data. Thank you.
That was very quick. Back to City Administrator Bob Kowits.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The next item on the action plan under medium-term actions was the issue of the City Council Police Department Information Sharing. This was a nice title for having council members interact more specifically with members of the IPD. I know that since the plan was adopted this summer, that many of you have taken the opportunity to do ride-alongs, to visit the jail, to meet with groups patrol officers. And I just wanted to call that out this evening, just to see if there were any comments from the council about those interactions and any additional direction that you would like the administration's assistance with to set up future opportunities like that.
That's great. I'm keeping my eye on the chat box to see if any council members wants to weigh in. Let's start with Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. Well, I should be a little careful because my last ride-along with the IPD was in 2010. But I will say what I have said for a long time, which is, I wish folks in the community had an ability to see the IPD other than, you know, someone standing at your window with their ticket book out, right? Because it just gives you a very different impression. And this is not in any way, I'm not trying to say anything about anybody's experiences with police departments, but not being at the business end of seeing police officers doing their job really allows, allows you a very different experience. And I came away very impressed with the IPD's professionalism and the idea that customer service has, I mean, you know, I had never really thought about customer service in the context of law enforcement. And, you know, when you think about it that way, it's another department of the city with some of the same customer service ethos that, and, you know, Public Works has. So I find it very beneficial and, you know, we get, most people, all you get is, you know, cop movies and cop TV shows or, you know, getting a speeding ticket. And it's just such a narrow set of experiences compared to, you know, sitting in the cruiser watching an officer do their, do their job. So I just, I wish there was a way for more folks to see that and see the way the department structures itself around customer service. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. City Administrator, these opportunities that are mentioned, you have it as on track, meaning that there is still opportunity then for city council members to participate? This isn't, this isn't complete. There are additional opportunities.
Absolutely. And Madam Mayor, what we'll do is we'll do an outreach with the council, again, to see if there's an interest for additional interactions, and we'll, we'll follow through with that.
That is great. Thank you. And what's next up on your list?
Next talks about the Equity, City Equity Team, Equity Training that we're doing. And Stephanie Johnson, our Director of Human Resources, is with us this evening. And Stephanie, perhaps I could ask you to just kind of briefly talk a little bit about what the Equity Team's current agenda of issues is, as well as some of the other items that are under your jurisdiction, either through the Equity Team or through Human Resources.
Sure. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. The Equity Team has been meeting every other week for some months now. We have divided into three subcommittees focused on recruitment, training, and engagement. We have built in some quick wins in our recruitment processes. We've developed an equity statement. We're talking about enhancing our board and commission recruitments and expanding our networks, certainly when we are soliciting applications for employment, where we advertise in a number of things on the recruitment side of things. The Training Committee has put together a RFQ for trainers so that we can focus our efforts on citywide training in 2021. I think we've talked at a high level with the council about the idea of staff cohort and dividing up our, our staff that would go through a series of trainings together. The RFP is out right now, due back to the Human Resources Department later this month. We also have looked at some online training options. Lot to talk about what to offer our staff and delving through that. The Engagement Team and some of the next work of the committee will, to start that conversation, Council President Hunt mentioned it tonight, the Equity Toolkit and how we start that process. We've partnered with a equity consultant to help our, help our team, kind of figure out what our hurdles are and where we should focus our work as it relates to this plan and customizing things for Isaguas. So high level, that's the items that we're working on, you know, selecting a trainer and getting that underway, continuing those recruitment efforts, and then starting the conversation around the toolkit. I think you're on mute, Wally.
Yay. Somebody more than the mayor not kind of muted. Thank you, Wally. Much appreciated.
Anytime, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Stephanie. The, the next item on the action plan is the Human Services Staffing. We've talked quite a bit about that in recent weeks and previous council meetings. So at the end of this section, certainly happy to answer any questions. The next page is the Longer-Term Actions. So Mayor, I'll stop there and just see if there's any questions on those medium-term actions.
I am not seeing anything showing up in the chat box, so if you want to start the review of the long term, that would be good.
Right. And then most of these have not started yet. The one that has is one, two, three, four, five, six items down, the Evaluate Resident Review of Equity and Human Services Initiatives. We have been able to jumpstart that with the Human Services Commission. And if I could ask Monica Negrilla just to come back online for a brief moment and talk a little bit about those initial discussions.
Thank you very much, City Administrator Bob Kowits. This is Monica Negrilla again. So for the Human Services Commission, we started with mid-year recruitment, where we looked for additional members of the Human Services Commission, and we focused on increasing the diversity on the commission. Next, the commission began an engagement process with some of our community members who expressed interest in being part of this work. And also, we engaged with one of the members of the Right to Breed Committee. You have heard from one of them earlier tonight. And actually, at this last meeting, the Human Services Commission had a great conversation on meaningful ways to engage the public and provide community engagement in different ways, not just through the traditional methods. And next, the commission has scheduled a training on equity, actually with the same trainer that the city council had training on a couple of months ago, just to help and lay out the foundation and make sure that all members of the commission have the same foundational concepts moving forward. And then next, we are working on planning a few community convenings and hearing more from members of our community, again, in the traditional way, but also in other ways, in more informal ways, and trying to build community. So I think those are the updates for now, and we do hope to complete the process sometime in February, March of next year, and hopefully come back to council in April. However, that also depends on how the community engagement process goes, and if we need to extend that a little bit, then we appreciate the timeline and the flexibility to do so.
Thank you, Monica. I am not seeing any questions at this point in time on the Resident Review of Equity and Human Services Initiative. I do have a couple of questions on some other long-term items that are listed. So if it's okay, Administrator Bob Kowits, we'll move to those.
You have.
Let's start with Councilmember Walsh, followed by Councilmember Martz.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. City Administrator Bob Kowits, can you talk about the timeline for the Police Review Community Board or Commission and kind of what we think the steps for that will be in 2021?
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. I think as Mr. Negrilla mentioned, the Human Services Commission is having some initial discussions, and one of the things they're talking about is what that might look like. So our hope would be, the administration's hope would be that we would get some feedback and recommendations from the commission over the winter, bring those back to the council, and then have an additional discussion with the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. Where is the consideration or evaluation of body cameras in this longer-term actions list?
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. It would be part of the review of the 2022 proposed budget. Tisha, if you could maybe go back a couple pages, I think as we looked at the budget item, body cameras was included there. And so our hope would be to convene a group of police staff next year. So as we're looking at budget issues for 2022, we would look at that there. So if you look at the, at the top of the document that's currently on the screen there, we would look additionally at community policing strategies, body cameras, equipment purchases, and continued review of jail operations.
Councilmember Martz?
Yeah. Did we, did we decide previously to wait to consider this as a fiscal year 2022 budget item?
Only, Councilmember Martz, members of the council, only to the extent of the narrative that was included here with the council's endorsement of the plan back over the summer.
Okay. I just, I understand it's a complicated topic. I just have a little instinctive recoil at saying we're going to step forward to making any decision that would impact in wait until 2022. I'd like to find a way, I guess, as one of seven, I would like to find a way to start this conversation because I feel that this item has multiple threads. It's complicated. Differing people in the community have potentially very different views on this one, and as well, it has a potential huge price tag and huge implementation costs associated with it. So maybe, maybe it, I suspect we have to get going on it soon, even if, even if any potential action would be for January 1st, 2022.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Are there any other items on, and I wonder, Tisha, if you could scroll to the Long Term tab, on any of the other topics on the Long Term tab? Or anything that City Administrator Bob Kowits, you need additional input in, or have you gone through your list?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've gone through our list. Appreciate the council's comments and feedback, and our plan would be to come back first part of the year with the next quarterly update.
That sounds great. Council President Hunt has some email comments on this topic that she would like to share with the council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we did receive two emails that I would like to acknowledge. One was specific to SRAs, and this resident wrote to us that they would support removing SRAs from the schools, and they spoke to concerns about the school-to-prison pipeline, and also spoke to that, in their opinion, having school officers did not make the schools safer or prevent school shootings. Additionally, we received the email that was about the Human Services and Mental Health Services part of this plan, and spoke in agreement with earlier parts of a council conversation in which we discussed the state needing to provide mental health services at the state level and the need for those services at the state level. And then also asked about increasing de-escalation training for police officers in Isaguas, and then spoke to the importance of awareness around mental health issues and behavioral health issues for people that help people through those situations. So that concludes the emails that we received specifically on this agenda item this evening. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Council President Hunt. So as it was stated earlier on, there is no formal action requested on this item this evening, just council direction as you have provided. We do have one more item on the agenda this evening. It's AB 8046 Performance Measurement Plan. But I just wanted to kind of get a visual head nod, yes or no, whether or not the council would like to have a five-minute break before we start to the last action. A nod, a thumbs up, thumbs up. Okay, let's take a five-minute break, and we'll get back here at 8:55. Let's take a five-minute break and we'll get back here at 8:55. I think we are just waiting for Councilmember Goodman. Tim, I'm going to give you a 10-second head start before I bring us out of our break. Welcome back, everyone, from break. The last item under Regular Business this evening is AB 8046 Performance Measurement Plan. The direction here is to get council to forward this on to the November 16th council meeting. And this item was last before council at the September 15th council study session. So I'd like to invite management analyst Jeremy Bretcher-Hymson to introduce this item. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Let me share my screen presentation. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Thank you. So this is Jeremy Bretcher-Hymson, management analyst. And tonight, I'll be updating you on the draft Performance Measurement Plan. First, I want to thank all the city staff who helped me collect the data and context for this plan. It was a large lift and the plan benefited from all of these contributions. At the presentation tonight, summarize the steps the administration took to develop the plan, discuss what's included in the plan, and provide an overview of high-level changes made to the performance measurement list since the last council presentation on September 15. Before jumping into the presentation, the administration tonight is looking for council's feedback on the performance measure list and the plan for managing the performance measurement plan, or program, rather. The administration will then make any additional requested changes for the plan to be adopted during the November 16th council meeting. This slide summarizes the council presentations on performance measures to this point. So starting back during the February council retreat, city staff presented a plan to measure the city's progress in achieving the goals that it established in the strategic plan. Then, during the July 14th study session, the administration presented on performance measurement program best practices based on neighboring jurisdictions and presented a wide range of sample performance measures. Most recently, during the September 15th study session, the administration presented 46 proposed performance measures across the six strategic goal areas and requested feedback from council. Tonight, as mentioned, we'll be discussing the draft Performance Measurement Plan included in the materials for tonight. Now, I'd like to summarize the main changes and updates to the Performance Measurement Plan since the September 15th presentation. First, the plan includes eight additional measures for a total of 54. This breaks out to between seven to 10 performance measures in each strategic goal area. The plan also includes a performance measurement matrix requested by council during the last presentation. This matrix includes the following seven fields for each performance measure. First, there's a definition of the measure. It's a more detailed description of what the measure is tracking beyond just the measurement name. There's the reason for measuring, which is the importance of tracking the measure. This description also includes relevant objectives from the strategic plan that the measure evaluates. There's the action to be taken based on the measure. These can be policy and/or funding strategies to impact the performance of a measure. There's the target, which are based on historical data and regional goals. Some targets have already been adopted through council actions, whereas others should be viewed as initial targets that are refined through continued measurement and policy analysis. There's historical data, which is data from the past few years on measures where data was available. The city dashboard and quarterly reports, which we'll discuss later, will include more detailed historical data than what's included in the plan, with additional time to collect older historical data and analyze subcategories within measures. There's the data source, which is internal or external provider of the measurement data. This includes city software that tracks the data to the department responsible for manually inputting the data or non-city stakeholders that provide the data to the city. Lastly, there's frequency, which is the timeframe data will be reported on by departments or provided by non-city sources. So we have this slide in the last presentation. And as you can see, the performance measures are still distributed relatively equally across strategic goal areas. Now, I'm going to move forward and summarize the high-level changes to measures in each strategic goal area, mainly focusing on the performance measures added since the last presentation, as well as measures in the plan that are currently missing historical data in the matrix. To be clear, measures that are missing historical data or don't have targets can and will be measured in 2021. So as I did in the last presentation, if this sounds good to council, I'll stop after each of the different strategic goal areas for comment and then move on to the next strategic goal area. But we'll start with mobility measures. In terms of performance measures added since the last presentation, we added linear feet of bicycle facility, commute mode share, traffic-related collisions, and car travel time according to recommendations made by council during the September presentation. Bicycle facility and commute mode share were included to match the focus of alternative modes of transportation in the Mobility Master Plan. And traffic-related collisions was included to match the focus on safety in the Mobility Master Plan. Additionally, during the September study session, council expressed interest in a measure to assess ease of car travel. This is not data that the city currently has or has the capacity to collect. The proposed measure would require the city to access this data from an outside source. The administration has found a low- or no-cost option to gather data on the time it takes to drive the city in popular corridors, disaggregated by time of day and season. And so this information replaces the request in the Agenda Bill and in the presentation that would require the city to budget $30,000 annually for this measure. And moving on to the next part of the slide, there are six mobility measures that are missing historical data in the plan's matrix. Linear feet of bicycle facility and walkways and percentage of household units within a quarter-mile of transit services will have historical data updates in the first quarterly report. Staff need additional time to review city data to access historical data for these measures. Potholes filled in average public transit boardings are modifying the way in which data is collected moving forward and will set baseline data beginning in 2021. And then, as discussed, the city has not tracked car travel time historically and can begin collecting this data in 2021. So I'll stop there for questions and comments on the mobility strategical area.
Great. I think we'll start with Councilmember Hall with a question.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Hall. Can you say what you just said again about car travel time? And something about low to medium spend associated with that? And we could start right away?
Yeah. So the city doesn't currently track this data in-house. And so we would need to access this data from an outside source. And initially, which was what was included in the Agenda Bill, a quote for full services to track this measure was quoted at $30,000. But the administration has found a lower or no-cost option moving forward to track this, replacing the request for council to consider this $30,000 annual professional services line item.
Okay. Thank you. I just needed to hear that twice. So appreciate that.
Jeremy, I'm not seeing any other questions at this time. If you want to continue?
Fantastic. Thank you, Mayor. So moving on, we have growth and development. And in terms of measures added since September, we've included a new national community survey measure to assess residents' perception of the whole city's built environment related to growth and development. And for historical data, most of the measures in this category have existing and easily accessible historical data, except for the measure that puts forth a CPD customer survey that will be designed in 2021. And within the first permit review time measure, short plat and preliminary plat data will begin being collected in 2021. And I'll stop there again for questions or comments on the strategic goal area.
I will give it one second, Jeremy. Right now, I'm not seeing any questions. I'll see if something pops up. We do have a question from Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. On the total housing units by type, the target was 55% owner occupied and 45% rental. And I wondered if you could explain that as the target?
Yes. Thank you, Council President Hunt. So this target was set to move closer to the strategic plan objective of diversified housing options, which is in the fourth Growth and Development Strategic Plan objective. With the most recent data from 2018 suggesting a 59% owner and 41% renter split, the target moves closer to an even split from the historical data in 2018. This target can also be updated as future data is measured and policies are adopted. But the idea here is to move closer to a more equal split of diversified housing types.
Thank you. Quick follow-up. Is there data about the, so in the past, we have seen data about the preferences in terms of people wanting smaller units than what's available in our housing stock for the most part, that there's a mismatch between what people would prefer to live in in the housing stock. And so I wonder if we could use preference or, you know, the demand data for this to, rather than set a closer to even split? Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. I also have a question in the list from Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Jeremy, on the owner occupied versus rental, does that really designate whether it's a, like, single-family house versus apartment? Or are we, if somebody has a single-family house that they rent out to a tenant, is that counted in this metric?
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. I believe that the owner percentage does include single-family houses that are rented out, but I'll have to double-check on that and get back to you.
Okay. And kind of along those lines, as much as I appreciate a measure of owned versus rented, one of the things that I want to be able to get at when we're looking, when we're trying to diversify our housing is, like Council President Hunt said, smaller units. And one way I might see looking at that is things like condos versus townhouses versus single-family, you know, or large lots versus small lots. I don't know what that is, but I'm not sure if in my mind just having additional rental would get us toward a desired goal for the city's housing stock. Nor am I certain that I would necessarily want to change the actions that are listed here. So I guess I still have some question marks here, whether or not we're getting to the right point.
Jeremy, I don't see any other questions or comments at this point. If you want to continue with the presentation?
Yeah, it looks like City Administrator Bob Kowits just had a comment, so I'll let him go before I move on.
Thank you. City Administrator Bob Kowits?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Back to Councilmember Walsh's inquiry. I think at this point, we're continuing to look for direction. My recommendation would be, let's keep what we have, let's measure it, and we'll get feedback. As we are looking at '21, this process will get refreshed as part of the plan that is part of the strategic plan to look at the measures. And that will happen before we know it in the late winter, early spring. So I think if we could, you know, go with the measure as it's been discussed and presented by Jeremy this evening, we'll gather data as we can. And as part of that feedback loop on the strategic plan, which we had hoped to do more of this year, but because of COVID, we're not able to, we'll be able to perhaps tighten that measure up as time goes on.
Thank you, City Administrator Bob Kowits. Jeremy, do you want to move to your next slide?
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we have environmental stewardship. So starting with the performance measures added since the last presentation, we've added tree canopy, acres of invasive plants removed and replanted, and involvement in environmental stewardship programs according to council's request to better align with the success measures in the strategic plan. And we also added percentage of streets that receive stormwater treatment to replace the percentage of salmon returns to Hatchery according to guidance from Hatchery staff, city staff, and council recommendations for a measure that is more directly influenced by city activities, but does influence salmon returns. The city's planning on collecting this data beginning in 2021. And so it falls in the historical data missing section as well. I'll stop there for questions and comments.
Sure. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. I see one of the measures for this is acres of city-owned parks. Thank you. I see one of the measures for this is acres of city-owned parks and open space. If I'm... Yep, I'm in the same spot, number 22 on your list. And I appreciate having this as a measurement, but I very much view open space and parks differently. And so rather than having it as a single measurement or a single target, I think it would do us more good to include both measurements. So that would be my preference there.
Just looking to administration to see if there's any issues with separating that out into two numbers?
No, we'd be happy to do that. If we could keep it as one measure, that would be great, but we'll report two numbers.
Sounds good. Thank you. Jeremy, you can keep on with your presentation.
Sorry, I was just writing a note. Thank you, Mayor. So next, we have social and economic vitality. And the performance measures added since September, we've replaced the number of human services programs with the number of program beneficiaries from human services programs to more directly get at resident support, which is noted by council in the last presentation. We've also added in the percentage of people who work and live in Issaquah to address a request by council from the last presentation as well. And then that is it. I'll stop there for questions or comments.
I'll give it a second to see if anybody's got a question or comments. Okay, I think you can move on, Jeremy.
Thank you. Next, we have city leadership and services. And starting with the measures added, we replaced debt per capita with the city's general obligation bond rating to better align with similar performance measurement programs and directly show city performance. And we also added resident public safety perception per council's request from the last presentation. For the historical data missing for measures, we have historical demographic data for applicants and employees, which is one of the proposed measures, but not for boards and commission members that we propose to begin collecting in 2021. Additionally, we plan to standardize the way in which we collect race and ethnicity data from applicants and employees in 2021 as well.
Thank you, Jeremy. It looks like Councilmember Martz has a comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. First of all, more generally, I have a concern around... I have a concern that if we change these metrics on a cadence of, you know, a couple of times a year, and we change 10% of them... I haven't done the math, but you don't get very many metrics that last very long. I think that one of the things that we saw about this was to pick some measures and stick with them for a while. So I do have, I have some general concerns around how often and what criteria we want to use to change. I'd sort of, I guess on some level, I'd love to see a full list and see, okay, here's what we've been collecting for this long, and here's what we're starting to get through lines on. Because I think that the biggest value is going to be metrics that we hold for two or three or more years, and we can actually see the trend line on how they're performing. More specifically, about the specific city general obligation bond rating, I'm not crazy about changing that for a couple of reasons. One is I have long held that per capita numbers, like expenditures per capita and revenue per capita, is really important in the city that's growing. The second thing is that city general obligation bond rating is a super boring number, right? It's changed once in the 11 years that I've been on council. Went from AA to AAA. We've been sitting at AAA for like five years. You know, hopefully, barring something crazy, we're going to sit at AAA for a long time. So I don't see, this is, there's no signal here, right? I guess maybe we could go to AA at some point and we'd spank ourselves over it. But I really liked the previous metric and think the new metric doesn't have much signal to it. Thank you.
City Administrator Bobquid?
You know, I think bond rating is a good, very hundred-thousand-foot measure. It's something that gets your attention when it changes. And so I think to keep that front and center makes sense. Jeremy, I don't know if you have any other comments about any of the other issues that Councilmember Martz raised, but as far as the general obligation bond, again, I think we're trying to create a whole picture of what the city is doing, and I think that that's a useful data point by itself to help create that larger picture. Jeremy, any other comments?
No, thank you, City Administrator Bobquid. I agree with your comments. And I also agree that it is a good zoomed-out view of how the city's performing financially. We would be happy to add back in the measure that Councilmember Martz is proposing. But yeah, I have no further comments.
Councilmember Martz?
City Administrator, I respectfully disagree. I was here when we were AA. It wasn't a problem. We patted ourselves on the back and said, oh, we'd be AAA, except the district is AAA. Oh, well, we got to be AAA and the district was AAA as well. It didn't really change our lives very much. But I do like the suggestion of having both in there. I think understanding our debt per resident is important and will change over time and will be impacted by what we choose to do with councilmatic debt and with debt that we put before the voters. And I think it's an important measure. So I guess what I'm saying is if we keep both measures, then I guess we both, you know, you get to have your thing and I get to have my thing. But the AA versus AAA, I get it, it's bad if you go from AAA to AA. But I'll tell you, we didn't sit around wringing our hands saying, oh, if only we were AAA, we'd be happy. We were pretty happy with AA. We were even happier with AAA. Thank you.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Chris Ray. I'm just going to amplify Councilmember Martz. I think the bond rating is a fine, as you said, Council, or City Administrator Bobquid, hundred-thousand-foot view because it doesn't change much. But it would be good to have something like debt per thousand population that does change. So I am just concurring with my esteemed colleague that that would be more meaningful to me.
And Madam Mayor, you know, I don't think there's any objection of adding that back. I think Councilmember Martz and I agree. I think that they tell you different things. And, you know, as we look at these performance measures, there are many audiences for these performance measures. Certainly, the city council is an audience, our community is an audience, businesses that may choose to come, locate here, do business with us. And so I think that, you know, it's that whole package. And I think it's hopefully we are at the end of the path that the council has been on for the last several months. You know, I think a good set of performance measures serve all of those different constituency groups. So we'd be happy to add back the per capita debt as an important factor.
Thank you. And Jeremy, I'm not seeing anything else on the chat box. Do you want to continue?
Thank you, Mayor. So lastly, in terms of the performance measures changed since the last presentation, we have the infrastructure strategical area. And so for the performance measures added since September, we added percentage of stormwater lines cleaned to better align with similar performance measurement programs and other public works vision measures. And we moved pavement condition index from mobility to infrastructure per council's recommendation in September.
Thank you, Jeremy. I'm not seeing any other questions or comments on this particular one, but I will go to Council President Hunt quickly just to see if there is any comments from the public that she would like to summarize on this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did not receive email comments on this one.
That's great. So let's do another round of calls for questions or comments. And if not, we'll move to a motion.
If I can, sorry, if I can add, there is also more to the presentation. This was just, this is the end of the updates on performance measure changes across...
Sorry, Jeremy.
But if there are questions or comments on the specific measures, this would be a great time to provide them as well before moving on to managing the program.
Okay, good. It looks like we have several. So we'll start with Councilmember Walsh, followed by Council President... Oops, hang on a second. Looks like they want to hold their comments. Council President Hunt, is yours on a specific item or is it for later?
It is on a specific item.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So this is Council President Hunt. I think this list is overall really good. It's a really good start. And, you know, as Council President, or Councilmember Martz spoke to, we'll have to measure these over a long period of time. One, though, that I think really needs to be revisited and changed is the ownership versus rental. I think focusing on whether people are owning or renting their homes is the wrong focus for that. We have a need for this middle, missing-middle kind of housing. And we have a need for smaller units to match the demand better of people in the community, but it's not really about rental versus housing. It's about that kind of housing. So I think when we look at a performance measure for diversity of housing types, it should be around the diversity of housing types that are available to people, including ADUs and apartments, condos, single-family homes, et cetera. So that one is the one that I would really request that it be revisited and changed before the next time we see this. Thanks.
Thank you. And Councilmember Walsh, it looks like you're going to hold on until we go through the rest of the presentation. Is that correct?
Yes.
Great. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mayor. So now I'll talk about the administration's plan to manage the performance measurement program and utilize the data to inform policy decision-making and transparency. The two main vehicles for providing performance measure updates will be through a performance measurement dashboard and quarterly reports. So here we have a sample dashboard page providing data on tree canopy and number of trees planted. This isn't by any means a final dashboard, but is meant to highlight how data and context for a measure can be visualized through Microsoft Power BI. More text can also be used where users can scroll through a text box as shown here. And data can be interactive when there are measures broken down into subcategories. And the administration is currently working with IT to ensure that the dashboard can be updated automatically as new data becomes available. And then next, we have performance measurement quarterly reports. And these will include updates on performance measure data and further analysis on performance measures to provide a detailed story. They can include disaggregating data by neighborhood or subcategory, analyzing other data that may inform the measure's performance, or including data from neighboring jurisdictions as comparisons as well. So moving forward, here's an implementation timeline. As we mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, we'll take council's feedback and propose that the performance measurement plan be adopted on November 16, along with the budget. By the end of the year, we'll develop streamlined database to collect data from multiple sources as well as design and disseminate the city performance dashboard with finalized measures. And then, moving forward, as just discussed, we'll update the dashboard and report on measures quarterly. So that does conclude the full presentation. As I mentioned before, feedback both on specific performance measures and the program management would be very welcome. Thank you.
Jeremy, this is the mayor. Sorry for cutting off your last few slides. Thank you for that. We'll go back to Councilmember Walsh, who has a question.
Thank you. I actually have a general comment. Is that okay at this point?
I would think so.
Okay, fantastic. So first of all, I love how this has progressed. And it's really great. You can see the incremental thinking on it. I very much appreciate the attention that this has been given. At this point, this is the first time that we've seen the targets. And I have to say, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with setting, just having a target column on there without knowing what the source or the reasoning for that target is. In some cases, you know, much like Council President Hunt said with the... Actually, that one's separate. That's kind of the idea of what we measure. But just how we get to these points? Did we choose, you know, a certain number of stormwater drainage issues responded to because that's what we thought was internally? Or we saw a neighbor city has that? Or we've had a better metric in the past and we're trying to get back up to that? I guess I just want to know the reasoning behind it because there were some that just seemed a little bit... Not out of left field, but I couldn't find a reason in my mind why they were set at the particular metric.
Jeremy or City Administrator Bobquid?
Go ahead, Jeremy.
I can go for it, yeah. Thank you for the comment, Councilmember Walsh. I think you raise very good points and you included the breadth of where the targets were designed from. So it is looking at neighboring jurisdictions. It is looking at historical data to see how we've performed. Some were ambitious goals set to, as you said, return to a certain historical level or above historical levels. Some were goals that are set regionally or in other jurisdictions as well. We could provide an explanation for kind of the confluence of reasons that inform each target. I was trying to think through a way that the matrix provided would still be legible and easy to follow without more text confusing each measure. But I fully acknowledge that understanding how the targets are set is very important. So I can provide additional context in a following, the follow-up that's submitted on the 16th to explain how they were determined. Or City Administrator Bobquid, I would want you to step in here as well. But we could adopt the performance measurement plan without targets. And then in further quarterly reports that are examined, we could dig deeper into deciding on targets and informing you where the targets came from.
City Administrator Bobquid?
Let me just add maybe a little bit of context. You know, we very much, from the administration's perspective, wanted to have a set of performance measures that made sense going into '21. This should have been a year-and-a-half process. We did it in six months. And so I think one of the challenges when you do that is that we have brought together information from a whole variety of different sources. We have had to work with some staff members who are very accustomed to performance measurement, other staff members who, quite frankly, are very apprehensive about this. And so in order to keep this process moving forward, I think what Jeremy and I and other members of the senior leadership team have done is just try to weigh this, what makes the most sense moving forward? Is it perfect? Absolutely not. We would have had at least another six months talking about targets, which we just don't have in order to move forward with. So I think, as Jeremy suggested, we could have an appendix that talks about the information that we did use to come up with the targets. And I think certainly, as we review this annually with the council, if there's interest in making adjustments to those targets, we can do that. But again, we wanted to give the council, Mayor Polly wanted to give the council this document to move forward with in '21. And given all the challenges we've had in '20, we're very proud that we've been able to get you the quality document that we have in a relatively short period of time.
I will go to Councilmember Walsh for a question or a comment, sorry? Or am I late on that one?
That was me giving the comment before, and so I...
Oh, sorry. Councilmember DeMistel?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Walsh's comment because she triggered an area that, one target that I saw that I questioned and then I forgot to comment on it earlier, I think it's item number 39. Let's see if I can get to that. It's percentage of human services partners achieving one or more contracted goals. And the target on that is 100%. And I just, I don't need an answer tonight. I just... To me, that's kind of a almost impossible goal to reach or target to reach. And so, you know, I just would like to hear at some point the rationale for that 100% target. You know, even in the best of worlds, it's, things happen. I don't know, 95% might be a little bit more realistic than 100%, uh, but, uh, and I don't think it needs to be resolved tonight at all. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. I'm not seeing anything else in the chat. I gave it a few seconds. Let's go to Council President Hunt.
Um, thank you. This is Council President Hunt. Again, I, I do think this is a really good list and it's really exciting to be, um, to be adopting this and starting to use these metrics, um, and then be in the process of using these in future decision-making as well as in budgeting. I think that's, that's all really good progress for us. Um, one, so I was comparing the, um, strategic plan success measures, which, which some of them were more forms than others when we, uh, adopted the strategic plan. But I did notice that, um, one of the success measures for the environment, which we don't really have in these, um, success measures is around forest health. And it says in our strategic plan, condition of forest health measure is in development. So, um, I, I think it's still in development. I still don't think we have a good measurement on that. But it, it is a concern because, um, as we continue to plant trees and as we continue to maintain our forested areas and such an emphasis on that, which is measured in the, uh, performance measures, there's also a, a growing concern about the, um, tree health with things like root rot and other, um, and climate change affecting the health of our forests, et cetera. So, so that's a continuing, ongoing concern. And I wanted to flag it as something that maybe with Green Issaquah starting up, um, and the Forest Stewards there, maybe they can help us, um, track the forest health in addition to tracking that we are, we are, um, planting trees and maintaining our forest canopy, uh, so that we have a holistic view on that. So not recommending a change, but just wanted to flag that because, um, in addition to having the forest, we want to make sure it's healthy.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Looking over the chat box to see if there are any additional comments? And if not, if there is someone who is prepared to make a motion. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. Uh, this is Council President Hunt. I move to forward AB 8046 to the November 16th, 2020 council meeting for deliberation in action.
And Deputy Council President Ray?
This is Chris Ray, second.
And, uh, is there any discussion? Not seeing any in the chat box. I will go to the city clerk for the roll call vote.
Yes, starting with Deputy Council President Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember De Michelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
And Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. That passes unanimously and that's pretty exciting that we're moving forward with this. Thank you. That was great discussion, lots of good questions and comments as well. The next item on our agenda this evening is for good of the order. And does anyone have anything for good of the order? Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I mentioned earlier, the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee is going to be taking up a, uh, position that says, "The Sound Cities Association recognizes the vital role of emergency management zone coordinators in regional emergency management coordination in King County. The essential support they provide to SCA cities, particularly small cities with limited or no full-time emergency management staff. SCA believes it is critical that the positions remain the independent advocacy role that they currently hold to prioritize the needs of the cities we represent. SCA recommends that Zone 1 and Zone 3 coordinators remain independent contract positions with regular opportunities for the zone partners, including fire district cities in King County, to evaluate their performance. As the zone coordinators may change over time, all zone partners should be involved in the replacement selection process due to the unique role the zone coordinators play in providing essential support to jurisdictions for emergency coordination and management in King County. Uh, this is a large issue for small cities that don't have their own emergency management staff. And I would say they have, um, maintained at pick in general discussions a very strong, uh, position in support of this. And in addition, I believe we as a city have sent, uh, a letter of support for this position. Uh, not that we don't have our own emergency staff, but that we see the value in these positions remaining, uh, independent and not becoming, I, I think the alternative is that they become regular full-time county positions. Um, Madam Mayor, do you have any other, um, do you want to say anything about the city's letter that it wrote on this matter?
Sure. Um, we're in agreement very strongly with the position that SCA is taking just based on our emergency response team. And so we're, we're happy and supportive for what, um, the SCA pick is going to be moving on. Thank you for bringing it here.
Sure. So I'll ask if any, if any, um, council members, um, have any concerns about me. Uh, basically, I think this is fairly straightforward given that the city has already identified, uh, the value in these positions. But if anybody, um, had concerns, um, I would love to hear it. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. This is Chris Ray. More of a question than, than anything else. You mentioned zone coordinators. What exactly are those?
Uh, the, uh, the zones are, that is a good question. I, I believe these are designed to facilitate for communities that don't have their own emergency, uh, response personnel, small communities like, uh, Algonia and Carnation and Duval and places that have very small staffs. Uh, they provide, uh, assistance to those communities. Uh, but I don't know specifically what encompasses Zone 1 or, and Zone 3 and why they would be different than other zones. Mayor Pauli, can you help me out with?
Yeah, we, I, thank you. This is the mayor. I do not believe that we have anybody from operations and emergency response on with this tonight, although I do know we have Andrea and she's welcome to chime in if she wants. I think the thought is that if, uh, the geographic area is divided into zones, that, uh, smaller cities, larger cities, everybody wanted to make sure that the coordination efforts were done on the city side versus having some done by cities and some done by counties. So we work very, very closely with the county, but this existing communication network seems to work better, um, for the smaller jurisdictions and the jurisdictions at the edge. So we, it's a contract position. Um, we, we benefited from it and so we're in support of maintaining it.
Well, that's great. Thank you.
All right. Well, I, I don't see anybody, uh, uh, you know, shaking their heads and, in, shaking their fists in rage. So, uh, I'm going to present the, the city's, uh, I'm going, the position the city has held thus far, um, as our position. But thank you for your time at the end of a fairly long meeting. And thank you, Madam Mayor, for letting me cover this issue.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. It looks like Council President Hunt would also like to bring up an issue.
Thank you. Um, this is Council President Hunt. And, uh, we will be having a, um, as part of our meeting on Thursday this week, we will be having a budget conversation and we will be receiving updated revenue projections. And this is part of the normal budget process in which we receive an updated, um, revenue projection around this time of year. This year, like everything else, there was a lot of uncertainty around the revenue projections. And so I wanted to, um, I'm going to be the chair on Thursday. And so I wanted to start council members thinking about, um, about how we want to proceed with using the information that we will receive regarding the updated revenue projection. And this evening, um, not, not wanting to start that conversation this evening, but wanting to ask the administration about what our procedural options are in terms of the, um, budget and adopting the budget, um, given that we're receiving some important updates this week.
Yes, thanks. This is the mayor. Um, typically the revenue forecast update is interesting, not ground shut, like not earth shattering. Um, this is a different year. This is 2020. And so the information that's going to be provided has a more significant impact. Um, I'll go to, to the Administrator Bobquist, see if we have put together anything in addition to the regular materials for Thursday night and what the process might look like.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. The agenda for the meeting on Thursday was, uh, distributed, uh, this afternoon. Uh, the council also received some additional information prior to that. Uh, we're prepared to walk through that, uh, for the council's consideration, um, as we would with other, uh, proposals. So, uh, you have all of, uh, Thursday evening to talk about this. Uh, the council also had tentatively scheduled some time on the, uh, study session for the 10th of November. Uh, there is one other item for that meeting on the 10th, and that is the, uh, first review of the comprehensive plan amendments. Uh, so you'll have, uh, at least two scheduled times, uh, to consider, uh, what the mayor is proposing, uh, with our hope still that the council will be able to adopt the budget on the 16th.
Thank you, City Administrator. And I think what, uh, Council President is asking is, um, in terms of process, I'm presenting a proposal, they will review the proposal, they can edit it, throw it out, do something different. They have all the same options that they have with the regular budget. So I'm just presenting a proposal and they will have their own discussion about how to proceed. Okay. Council President Hunt, uh, did we miss anything in the answer?
Um, no, not exactly. I guess I just, um, would say that, um, as we, as we look to that revenue projection, um, part of the conversation on Thursday that I think we should have is how comfortable are people, um, either, you know, think about if we, if we think we need more time in terms of adding more meetings? That would be one option if we're comfortable. Or if we, um, we would do, my understanding is the third option would be to adopt, um, the budget that we've seen previously. And then separately, um, we could add meetings and adopt a, uh, budget amendment, um, at the, towards the beginning of 2021. Um, so those are, as I see it, three potential options. And since we are, um, since we are sort of towards the end of our budget process right now, I wanted to flag those options for council as soon as possible and, and, um, make sure that we're ready for having that conversation on, on Thursday in addition to the conversation about the proposal itself.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other comments for good of the order? I'm going to move on to the upcoming council meeting. So the following. Sorry, Madam Mayor. Deputy Council President Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. This is Chris Ray. Um, I just want to talk just a, a brief bit more about Thursday's meeting because typically we get the updated revenue projections and that's, that's pretty normal. What's atypical about this one is we're getting also, um, expenditure revisions. Is that, that's correct, right? You're bringing forward on Thursday, new expenditures along with the updated budget, uh, revenue forecast.
Correct.
And, and so the, the question, um, I just want to be really clear that we need to, to wrestle is we, you know, we're not at the 11th hour, but we're, you know, we're at 10:30 on, um, budget deliberations, actually 9:45. But, um, seriously, we, we are late in the process to be introducing new, new expenditures. And I know that 2020 is a different year, but I think we need to be really clear about, do we, that we need to do our due diligence on this budget proposal as if it was the budget, i- if we're going to enact it this year. And, you know, we have two weeks from tonight essentially to the date we are going to, um, targeting to approve the budget. So we, we need to be really, uh, clear on what we want to do, um, after Thursday. Do we want to say, yeah, everything that's in this new budget is great and we're just going to roll it forward? I think this is what Council President Hunt was saying. Um, do we want to schedule some more deliberation sessions between now and two weeks from now so that we can work through it? Um, and, uh, there's just a, a Councilmember Goodman's comment.
Right.
Or do we want to push this off? So, um, it's, it's more of a process for going forward. You know, what's, what's the best way?
We'll provide some additional process information. And I do want to be respectful too of not actually having a process meeting right now. But Thursday can definitely start with process. Um, the proposal that will come on Thursday will include both a revised, uh, revenue projection and, um, an additional expenditure plan. And it's, um, the reason they're both coming forward is that we have also heard about ending fund balances and wanting to make sure that we are staying within our fiscal policies. So it is a proposal and we'll talk more about process on Thursday. It is also $3 million worth of spending in a 130-plus million dollar budget. So $3 million is a lot of money to us, but, um, you know, it's not, it's not $10 million or $15 million. So we have lots of different ways of looking at it. I think Thursday's going to be a very interesting meeting. Um, I'm going to move on to the, uh, upcoming virtual meeting schedule. So as we just talked about, the city council study session on Thursday, November 5th starts at 6:30. It'll have the 2021 legislative agenda and it will also have the 2021 proposed budget, uh, with the revenue projections we were just referring to. City council study session on Tuesday, November 10th at 6:30 PM is also a virtual meeting. It will have the 2020 comprehensive plan amendments and reforms and the 2021 proposed budget if needed. Uh, the city council regular meeting will be on Monday, November 16th. And the potential agenda items include citywide work plan update, the capital improvement plan, CIP update, the per and polyfluoroalkyl substance update, which is our PFAS study, uh, community planning and development fees, and the final 2021 budget, public hearing, and anticipated adoption. Next item on our agenda this evening is an executive session, but there will be no executive session held this evening. So there being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 9:48. Have a good night, everyone.